It's 6:55, but look at me. Okay, we did it.
The time is 7 o'clock and we will call to order the city council meeting for September 24th, 2018. Tonight's invocation will be done by Pastor Maeve Carter of New Beginnings United Methodist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all please stand.
Joining with me, Lord, we're grateful for the community that we live in and as we come to the city council meeting, we're reminded of all the ways that not only the great benefits we get by living here, but also by the responsibility to be able to serve others. So thank you for these who serve us on a daily basis. Their job is not easy and we're thankful for the time and energy and effort and wisdom that you give them. It also has challenged us to be a blessing to the people we live with and to assist one another, encourage the people that we live with in this city and to make our community better. We're thankful for the opportunities you give us and we're thankful for the country we live in, for all these things. We are grateful tonight. In your name, amen.
What is to the flag of the United States of America? To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Pastor Carter. Elaine, if you'll call, roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Browning?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here.
Item four on the agenda is the approval of the motion summary of the regular meeting of council held September 10th, 2018, as recorded and transcribed.
I move for approval.
The motion by Mrs. Keller, a second by Mr. Shaffer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Obey.
And then we also have an approval for the motion summary of the work session of meeting, the council meeting held September 6th, as recorded and transcribed.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Shaffer. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five, Elaine, if you'll please read the consent agenda.
Item A, establish October 8th, 2018, at 8 o'clock PM as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 18-88, in ordinance amending section 549.08 of the City of Delaware codified ordinances related to pointing and discharging firearms. Item B, establish October 22nd, 2018, at 7:30 PM as a date and time for a public hearing and third reading of ordinance number 18-89, in ordinance amending section 917.14 of the Sanitary Sewer Regulations of the Streets Utilities and Public Services Code to add a 50% surcharge for non-city customers.
Is there a motion in the consent agenda?
Second.
Have the motion by Mr. Shaffer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle? Yes. Motion carries. Item six is time set aside for letters, petition, and public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? If you'll come forward first and then as you sit down, if you'll please give us your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Amber Hudson. I'm with Mash Pantry and Resource Center. My address is 6640 Hughes Road in Prospect, Ohio, 43342. Thank you. The reason I'm here tonight, well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to sit down and speak with you all. I am the founder and president of Mash Pantry. It's a pantry and resource center for veterans, military families, and survivors. We have three pantries in Columbus, one in Grove City, one at Rickenbacker, and one at DSCC. Our goal is to have a pantry here in Delaware to cater to all of the veterans, military families, and survivors. We do not go by income. We are just honored to serve them all. We have had a produce market up here for the past couple of years, which we had to stop, and we're hoping that once we do get a location, you know, while we do have the go-ahead, that we can then restart the pantry, I mean, the produce market. We have seven different produce markets in the area, and in addition to that, we have a peer support group for PTSD, which is another thing that we would love to offer up here as well. We do have the support of the Delaware County Veteran Service Office. I just left their meeting, so, and they voted us in, but the space that we would need is at least 500 square feet. If we had a little more than that, then that would be fabulous. We were hoping to do the Second Ward Community Center. However, it's not making, it's not happening. So our goal is to maybe find something else then, or, you know, I'm just putting it in your ear that we're here. You know, we are an all-volunteer staff. I don't make anything. You know, I started this in 2013, and the way I started it was I pawned my Jeep and jewelry. So I am dedicated to this, and I'm a Navy veteran myself. So, you know, I, oh, thank you. But, um, but our motto is no veteran, military family, or survivor will go without, at least not on our watch. So if you have any questions, you can, I don't know if you ask me or if I...
I'm gonna ask you.
Okay.
Thank you for your service, number one.
Thank you.
Can you tell me why it didn't work at SWCI?
Where's...
Second Ward initiative?
Uh, you're right now in the middle of a project across town. So, I mean, I have had numerous veteran organizations willing to come in and clean out the warehouse, and we have some funding to start on, you know, getting it going. Um, I mean, the, I mean, all the posts, I gave them a bunch of raffle items. They raffled it off. All I wanted was money for our truck. What they did was they took everything that they raffled, like TVs, DVDs, gazebos, and I wanted them to just take it and put it towards their posts. What they did was they ended up giving it back to us. So we have already 1,300 in the kitty for this pantry to happen, plus the Veteran Service Office had, they did have $3,000 for us, however, a widow came in and she needed some of it. So we have, I believe, 13,000 left in their kitty for us. So they believe in us, and we believe in this city. So, you know, we're ready to rock and roll and make it happen.
Before you leave, we could, Elaine, your number, and I will look into this a little further.
Okay.
See where we can find a spot for you, because I thank you very much that this is great for our community.
Thank you, absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Okay. Thank you. How often, maybe, how often would you need this space? Well, we would like to, I, we already actually, the veterans, the VFW charities, I submitted a grant, and I already purchased all the shelving that would go in a pantry, and it's over at the Veteran Service Office, just waiting to go, to be put in. You're looking for a dedicated space? We are looking, we need to have a dedicated space to start our produce market again as well. Okay. So, yeah, again, I know it's...
Five days a week, seven days a week? What are you thinking here?
It would probably be a couple of days a week. Okay. And believe it or not, all of the guys at different posts have already volunteered. So we have, we have a staff of volunteer veterans ready to volunteer for this. So, and my volunteers down in Grove City are willing to come up and train all the veterans and everything. So, you know, this is, this is a win-win for everyone, and I don't want anyone to think that it's just limited to Delaware County. We would love to extend it also to Marion tomorrow, you know. We're here to help every veteran. So, and we would encourage everyone here to come in and volunteer with us. I think that would be wonderful for the community to see your support as well.
What kind of square footage are you looking for?
At least 500. Um, if, I mean, if we could get like 1,000, that would be a blessing, but, um, you know, our pantry down in Grove City, we're in 500. However, we do have a separate greeting room where we put clothing and stuff. That's why it would be nice to have a little separate area. Plus, with a separate area, we could also have the PTSD peer support group, which we already have facilitators ready. So...
Do you have a question?
Yeah, Amber, what kind of parking needs do you have? Do you need a drive-through area or a parking lot? What are you looking for?
Oh, not a drive-through area. I would say, because we want the veterans to come in. I mean, I'm looking at everybody, and you're all about my same age. We all grew up with tears, where everybody knows your name. We want everybody to come in, and, I mean, my volunteers even call veterans if they have not shown up in a while, and they check up on them. They send them birthday cards. They send them anniversary cards, well, you know, if they bought a new house. So it's literally walking into home. And so I would prefer that we have, well, it would be nice to have for handicap.
Oh, sure. But about how many are you looking for in general? How many people visit? How many volunteers? Are you looking for 20 spaces generally, five days a week, six days a week?
Um, you know, I'm sorry, I haven't even thought about something like that. So, yeah.
Thank you so much for coming in. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you, once again, for taking a moment.
If you'll give Elaine your phone number, that'd be wonderful. And I have another gentleman that wants to come forward at this time, I have two.
I have an handout for everybody. Well, maybe not for everybody, but hopefully for us. My name is Joel Shaffer. I live at 242 West Lincoln Avenue in Delaware, Ohio. And I'm here to address the issue of the increase of the city income tax for road improvement. The last election, that same vote went down pretty hard. I think we're all finding that it's tough to get roads taken care of, and with the 2021 federal highway use tax becoming insolvent, I think this is going to be even a tougher issue for cities to handle. And instead of going to the citizens and constantly increasing their taxes, I thought maybe an approach of what the Public Utility Commission of Ohio took might be one that might be adopted by the city, and that's to enforce the Code of Federal Regulations, which is Title 49, Parts 101 to 199. These are the existing trucking regulations that are enforced on all trucks nationwide, and the state of Ohio adopted the same rules and regulations. How that responds to the city is that we already have law enforcement with portable scales and things of this nature where they can inspect trucks. The point is that the fines for these trucking violations start at $10,000 per count to $25,000 for trucks hauling hazardous materials. It wouldn't take long on an enforcement basis to get into the millions of dollars. I enforced these regulations for eight years with the federal government, and I wrote thousands of these types of cases against trucking companies, and it did generate multimillion dollars just one person alone. So I know it works, and I know it's something that can help the city out, but I'd like to see maybe a different approach than just raising taxes. The flip side of this is, well, what happens if the trucks start, stop coming to Delaware? And that is, I think, a good news, whereas then we don't have trucks destroying our streets anymore, and they're gonna last longer. So it's a win-win situation. We have a joint vocational school on the east side of town. That's gonna become vacant. That would be an ideal location to bring trucks in and do the inspections, working with the law enforcement. Plus, you have a chance to train your joint vocational students, maybe to be a truck inspector, and they would, you know, potentially have a job to work with here in the city. So I think it's a win-win situation, and I'd like to have you at least consider the thought of maybe adopting the Code of Federal Regulations instead of raising taxes here in the city of Delaware. If you have any questions, we'd like to answer anything. I can.
Questions? Okay, and I know how to get ahold of you, my neighbor, but...
Sure.
If you'll leave your phone number also with Elaine, so we can look into this a little bit deeper with our attorney here and see what he thinks about it. That'd be wonderful.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Shaffer. Yes, sir, in the back.
Hello. My name is Christopher Kirk. I live at 15 Maple Street, Delaware, Ohio. I didn't know about the meetings which take place on a regular basis, but I spoke with a police officer last night, and he was down off of London Road and talking about the drug problem which exists here in Delaware with opiates. And one of the things that they need is a drug dog, a canine. I know it costs money, but the feds, the overdoses, the people going to the county jail, it will be compensated, you're saving more than that, and it's there for the officers. I'm a veteran, but every day these officers put on a vest, and they go to work, and they get shot at any time. It's like being in the military, you're in active duty, wartime, and they take it, they do it so often, they take it for granted. I don't know, I appreciate you for what you do. And he was talking about their needs, and that's why I came down, because there's so many things going on, as in down the street from my sister, you've got people who live in the same house doing the same thing over and over again. Maybe they have an ordinance or something. If you're having multiple arrests or drug convictions in the area, the city needs to take the house. I don't care if you're my neighbor, if I've known you all my life, if you destroy my hometown, I don't want you here. You know, I went in the military to serve my country, but I died for my city also. So I talked with the officer, and he told me what the problems are. They posted, they have no probable cause to do the search, the canine would give that, and then we could have a sign, north, east, south, and west, all around. You come into Delaware, it's zero tolerance, the canine on that, letting people know, because Columbus expands, everybody's moving into town, and they're bringing the problems with it. They didn't grow up on 57. They don't have the same values that we had growing up. Their kids are growing up seeing mom and dad doing this and thinking this is all right. Can't have this in Delaware, you know? And it's also affecting the tax basis here in town. If you get rid of these different homes in different areas or change them over, or department complexes, have the elderly going, they're not the ones doing the drugs. It's the youth who are going in and have this drug problem. Gotta find a way to take care of this, because, you know, this is our home, and this is what made us who we are. And I'd like to thank you all for your time. May the Father bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, committed reports. Mr. Jones?
I have none.
Mrs. Keller?
Well, I am reporting from the Sister City Committee. I returned the day before yesterday from Germany. I visited Germany, France, the Netherlands, Belgium, I'm missing one, Luxembourg, all in one day. And they were very gracious to receive Rand Ebert and I, and we had a wonderful time just culturally, learning about the way that they do things differently. They're much more energy-conscious, much more trash-conscious, all of the trash is divided into different containers to produce very, very little trash that goes to landfills. It was a very interesting experience, and I'll be telling you all a whole lot more about it. But thank you very much for the opportunity to go represent the city. I attended the museum opening that was focused on the American-German cultural exchange that happened after World War II. All the way up until modern times, there is a large military base in bombholder Germany, and that is still in existence today. So very interesting trip. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have none. None. Mr. Rohr?
Nothing.
Mr. Shaffer?
Just real quick, last week at Warped CV, they let us know that the FCC is considering passing rules regarding small cell power, which would override the state's laws. We just got the request, and we did write a letter to the FCC opposing those changes, but at this point, it's still up in the air. Good impact is considered.
Wow.
It's all happening.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item eight. Elaine, if you'll please read A into the record.
Consideration of a liquor permit, trucks for RMPM Enterprises LLC at 26 North Sandusky Street, Delaware, Ohio, 43015. Permit classes D5 and D6.
Chief, Darren, did you have anything on this?
The only thing I have, we did the liquor background ahead of time, so when the request does come in, we're happy to report that we found no legislative basis to request or be successful at a hearing. We'd recommend passing on that.
And 26 North Sandusky Street is...
I think it's vacant.
Burritos.
It's gonna be hot-headed burrito.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Darren, did you want to add something? You looked awful excited there for a second.
I'm gearing up for the next one, which will be even shorter.
Hang on, buddy. I'm sorry. I was getting to you, if the applicant would like to come forward at this time. Do you have anything to add?
I'm just here to answer any questions you may ask for line up at the burrito occasion.
Okay.
Where is exactly...
Okay, come to the microphone.
I'm a little excited.
I know you are.
Mayor, council members, good evening.
Your name and address for the record.
Nick Miller, 4950 Owen Tangee River Road, Delaware, Ohio.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Where will you be located?
26 North Sandusky, right next to Second Soul and the new coffee shop there, a couple doors up from the hamburger inn.
When do you open?
Well, we'd like to open yesterday, but it's probably gonna be January or February.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I will be there.
Okay, the food's good.
Roll call please.
I gotta make a question. But we have it handedly written on the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the trucks without an hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr.... Mr. Rohr? Second by Mr. Shaffer. My point is it's not working. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Elaine, if you'll read item nine into the record.
Item nine, consideration of a liquor permit changed relating to a stockholder change for Four Fat VS LLC Doing Business as Restoration Brew Works at 25 North Sandusky Street and Patio, Delaware, Ohio, 43015. Permit classes A1A and A1C.
Madam Mayor, producer on, go for it. Mr. Attorney. This stockholder change involves some members of that business splitting off from Restoration Brew Works, so the remaining members have already been checked via background check. So we made a decision that we did not need to conduct a new background check, and we do not recommend requesting a hearing, because there's nothing wrong with the remaining members. We left it on the agenda to be consistent, because we always practice give council lists the opportunity to request a hearing, but we do not recommend requesting one. Did I miss anything, Chief?
No, you did not.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any motions?
Move for approval without objection. Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaffer, second by Mr. Browning. I'm not sure which one you said. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle? Yes. Motion carries. Item 10 on the agenda is consideration of ordinance number 18-86. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Ordinance number 18-86, an ordinance supplementing the 2018 appropriations ordinance to increase funding for the purchase of jet fuel and 100 LL fuel for the airport and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and to provide for the continued fuel sales supplies for sale to airport users, and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Mr. Frehna?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this ordinance is very similar to the general fuel purchase ordinance we passed a couple of council meetings ago. At the airport, we had the same issue, very strong sales this year, substantially higher sales in jet fuel than prior years, and also price increases both for jet fuel and for general aviation fuel. So that has left our account short. We actually need to purchase fuel now, and we need to, we need the supplemental approval before we go ahead and purchase that. I added in there just a chart that shows what our fuel purchases are, and you can see the jet fuels up substantially, and although general aviation is close to where we were last year, the cost increase to purchase that fuel has made it such that we need additional funds for that. And we are obviously receiving revenues that are greater than our cost of purchase. So we are asking because of the, because of the condition of the fund for approval at first reading, if council so wishes.
Is it time to raise our prices, since we have to do the supplemental to buy? I mean, where, I know we're usually a little bit lower than everyone else, which is good because they want to buy it here, but...
No, it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily a condition. Our prices fluctuate depending on what we have to purchase. It's just the fact that the overall increase in fuel sales in general have far exceeded the funding to purchase those fuels.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Frehna? Is there a motion?
I hope to suspend the rules required to be reading of ordinance 1886. Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaffer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the approval of emergency clause in ordinance 1886. Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaffer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the approval of ordinance 1886. Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaffer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 11 is consideration of ordinance number 18-87. Elaine, if you'll please read this to the record.
Ordinance number 18-87, an ordinance supplementing the 2018 appropriations ordinance to provide additional funding for land development, engineering, professional services, and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause that this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city, and for the further reason to provide for the timely review of development plans and for the continued utilization of construction inspection services. And as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Mr. Frehman?
Yes, this will be your first reading tonight. I'll just give you the background tonight, and we can go to another meeting, because it does involve additional funds. Every year, we provide so many funds through the engineering budget for the plan review and inspection services. We try to anticipate what the cost will be through the year, but we don't fully fund that, so we don't have too much money tied up. This year, we will exceed the appropriation by about $150,000, according to our estimates. So, I'll be looking to supplement that fund by $150,000, which should carry us through end of the year and allow us to continue to use our construction inspectors. This is primarily for the construction inspection, but also some outside plan review as well. I can report that our revenues, again, are, have equal to and exceeded the cost to provide these services. But again, the revenues aren't, it's not a year for year. Some of these revenues we're collecting won't be expended until next year, but on a project-by-project basis, we're covering the cost for that. But this will allow us to take the inspection through the end of the year. And again, this is first reading.
Thank you.
Mayor Riggle? I was talking to Acting City Manager, Jackie Walker, and I was wondering if we could look into items like 10 and 11 that are, seem pretty common sense, straightforward, that are making money, that something could move to a consented gen item, so...
Okay, we're gonna jump down to item 14, which is a 7:30 public hearing, and second reading. If you'll read this on the record.
Ordinance number 18-81, an ordinance amending section 917.05 of the Delaware Codified Ordinances, modifying industrial pretreatment limits for silver and mercury.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is the second reading, as you know. So, I have modified a bit the fact sheet. Maybe it's a little simpler, maybe it was easier to understand in the first reading. But if you have continued questions on this topic, I'd love to address them. We are requesting that the industrial release rates of mercury and silver be lowered, as was outlined last time. If you have any other comments?
I don't. Does anybody else here?
No.
Okay, this is the public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward at this time on the subject? Okay, it's me, none? Yes, we'll close that public hearing. And what is the wish of council? Do you want to vote on it tonight? Do you want to go to another reading? This is the second reading. Do it.
Suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 18-86. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of ordinance 18-81. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, let's go back up and do item 12, which is consideration of ordinance number 18-88. If you'll please read this to the record.
Ordinance number 18-88, an ordinance amending section 549.08 of the City of Delaware's Codified Ordinances relating to pointing and discharging firearms.
Darren?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Shulman, sorry.
Oh, I'm Darren. That's my name. Madam Mayor, members of council, this is a pretty simple ordinance. As you probably are aware, our current codified ordinances prohibit discharging of firearms in the city. We have a unique opportunity where the Boy Scout camp is going to annex into the city, but they actually have an archery and a firearms range. So, as, in addition to another piece of legislation, which you're gonna see the annexation, and then another piece of legislation coming later, which will be the zoning, correct, Dave? This would be necessary to make that annexation happen if council desires, to allow them to continue that already existing activity. Chief Pidgenowski and Dave Efflon and I have worked to craft the city as tightly as possible, so we're not gonna have lots of folks annexing the city, shooting guns at their houses, but it does provide some flexibility for other institutional uses that we could think of that may someday want to annex and preserve what they already have, if we are okay with it. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Dave and Chief Pidgenowski are also resources on this as well.
Questions? Make sense?
If the Boy Scouts sell the property, what happens to those gun-shooting rights, or what happens to that?
The way we have it written right now, it has to be an institutional use, so if they sell it to Darren Shulman's development camp, I couldn't have a gun range there. If they sold, I assume, and maybe Dave can answer, if they sold to Girl Scouts of America, and they had the same institutional use, that could probably be preserved, but it couldn't just be a private gun range or anything like that. Is that fair, Dave?
Yeah, just two points. This is set for public hearing next time, and then dovetail with the annexation on October 22nd. The applicant needs to know the answer to this question in addition to the annexation. So, just that point of order. But the way we have the draft zoning text, we're still working through the, some drafts of it, is that this section would work with the zoning text that will be coming before you, that has some very tight language with respect to that question, council member. And if it were to be sold for non-institutional use or non-governmental use, those ranges, there's an archery range, a BB range, and a small gun range, would have to go away. They have to cease to exist on the site. So, the, this change and the companion zoning that's really required by this change as well, should you approve it, work together.
And that brings up a good point as well, which is, the way this is written, you still would need to be approved under a zoning code for other annexations that would want to come into the city. Council would still have to pass an appropriate zoning that allowed it, so it's not even automatic for other similar uses.
Alrighty, thank you. As you said, this will be back for public hearing on October 8th. So, if no other questions, let's go on to item 13, which is consideration of ordinance number 18-89. Elaine, if you'll please read this to the record.
Ordinance number 18-89, an ordinance amending section 917.14 of the Sanitary Sewer Regulations of the Streets Utilities and Public Services Code to add a 50% surcharge for non-city customers.
Thank you.
Probably me again. You gonna lead? I'll take lead.
Actually, I have blank on here.
Oh, Blake, I don't want to usurp your... Okay. Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Members of council, I would like Darren to speak on this. Madam Mayor, members of council, I feel like I'm talking a lot this evening. I apologize. Right now, in our existing codified ordinances, we have a provision that allows us to provide water service outside the city, and it adds a 50% surcharge. We don't have similar provisions for our sewer, and this is something we've been examining for quite some time. The fact sheet has some of the reasons why it might be advisable. This issue has recently come to a head. You may have been briefed on the river by situation where they're not in the city, they're not necessarily contiguous to the city, so they couldn't annex, but they want sewer service. In fact, EPA is kind of almost requiring them to have sewer service, so we're kind of trying to help them out. So, this is not a river by ordinance, but it's a step in that process to make that project a reality. So, basically, it would just mirror the 50% surcharge that we do for water, for sewer. In the future, this might make council have decisions as to whether we want to continue to require that annexation as a prerequisite for sewer service. This would give the opportunity to say, maybe we don't want to do that, maybe we just want to have the surcharge and go that way. It gives you a little bit of flexibility there. But other than that, Blake, did I miss anything? I would say that this is probably a little more important than the water one that we already have, solely because there is generally more work involved with processing these sewer bills on financing side. There is coordination with Delco Water. We are, sewer rates are based on water usage. If they don't have city water, we're working with another entity to get that monthly billing. There, so, there are other things to consider besides just that they're not within our zone.
Any questions? And this, again, is just the first reading. And we're just early. Let's go on down to item...
16?
Let's do item 16, yeah. This is the second reading of ordinance number 18-80. Elaine, if you'll please read that one to the record.
Ordinance number 18-80, an ordinance accepting the annexation of 221.341 plus or minus acres of land, more or less. Description and map are attached hereto, as exhibits A and B for the annexation known as the Central Ohio Boy Scouts of America. Camp Lazarus annexation by Michael R. Shade, agent for the petitioners.
Thank you. Mr. Efflon?
Madam Mayor, members of council, again, we have to take this to another reading so that we can dovetail this with that companion piece of legislation heading for October 22nd.
Okay. And I know Mr. Shade's here. You're just good with, next time you want to do something, I'm saving you out tonight.
You know the thing that I would like to do this week?
That's to come to the microphone. I'm sorry. You know this, Mayor Shade.
Good evening. Michael R. Shade, attorney at law, Post Office Box 438, Delaware, Ohio.
And I'm Jeff Moe. I'm representing the Simon Kenten Council, formerly known as the Central Ohio Council Boy Scouts of America, and we're at 807 Kenney Road in Columbus.
Thank you.
We'll do a lot more specifics and any of your questions the next time. I just want to take the opportunity to have Jeff introduce himself. He's the CEO of the Boy Scouts of America, Simon Kenten Council, and he, all this rests on his shoulders. It seems somewhat interesting that this follows up on an ordinance where you're gonna surcharge, and they've made the decision to come in the city for exactly that reason. They need the essential city services, and they've made that choice to come in. And we're working very closely with staff, as Dave indicated, we're going through and finalizing all the details on the texts, and working with the other staff members with regard to these ordinances, and I think it's gonna be a very good thing for the community, and it gives them the opportunity to continue to provide necessary services to their Boy Scout, scouting community in general. That's all I have this evening, and I know we're gonna get into a lot more questions.
Any questions while I'm here this evening? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next meeting, you'll have a chance to see in a few weeks. We'll do item 17, which is the second reading of ordinance number 18-85. Elaine, if you'll please read that.
Ordinance number 18-85, an ordinance amending the Management Professional Technical Confidential and Supervisory Employees Pay Plan.
Mrs. Walker?
Sorry. Thank you. That's okay.
Now he's whispering stuff.
So, Mayor, members of council, tonight, this is our second reading of the changes we discussed in the Management Professional Supervisory Employees Pay Plan. This has to do with the need for the increase in, or, excuse me, the decrease in the available building inspectors that we have in Ohio, and in order to get more competitive with our communities, surrounding communities, staff is, did a survey of surrounding communities, compared job responsibilities, and we're recommending that we make this adjustment in order to be more competitive with our other communities in the area, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Any motions?
I move to suspend the rules on, we're requiring three readings on ordinance 18-85. Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're three minutes early. Well, let's go back up to 15, which is a 7:45 public hearing and second reading. Elaine, if you'll please read this slowly into the record.
Ordinance number 18-84, an ordinance for Mystic Golf and Games LLC for approval of a conditional use permit request for Mystic Golf and Games at 1159 Columbus Pike within the Delaware Square Shopping Center in Zone B3, Community Business District.
Mr. Efflon?
I can attempt to go slowly, if you like, before we get to the public hearing time, but the case is fairly straightforward. This is for Mystic Golf and Games. Located at 1159 Columbus Pike, that's in the Delaware Square Shopping Center. It's the old space. We have it written here as the Aaron's Rental. Many of us might remember it as the Damon's Space as well. We have a business group that is looking to put in an indoor kind of golf and game facility, particularly golf, but they also have some very fancy machines that allow you to play a kind of virtual golf, virtual baseball, et cetera, et cetera. They're much better explaining it than I am, but they sound, machines sound pretty cool to me, in many respects. In terms of the conditional use permit, that is allowed in the B3 district, and is required only because our code was changed several years ago to require indoor recreation entertainment centers to have to go through conditional use permit to make sure that we have traffic, noise, games of skill, those sorts of things accounted for. Those are all accounted for here in your planning commission. Your staff do recommend you announce approval of this. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from Mr. Efflon? Would the applicants like to come forward? I think you have a bunch of students here that just got very, very excited, so I think you need to give us some detail, because they're gonna write this in their reports and go back to school and tell everybody.
I'm David Sturman, 328 Lindwood Street.
I'm Scott Redder, 333 North Liberty Street. Thank you for your time.
Sure. Do you want to add anything to the report, because there's some students that haven't heard anything about this?
Well, what we're installing is an 18-hole blacklight putt-putt course that will include, starting off with two high-definition golf simulators, where you can play golf, baseball, football, soccer, lacrosse, zombies, dodgeball, et cetera.
Did you say zombies? One of them wanted to know.
Yeah, we have Darren, our 14-year-old over here.
Fully interactive gaming. We will have prepackaged food and soda, and we are working on our alcohol permit as well. And birthday parties.
Any questions? It sounds wonderful. I'm really excited, you guys. Any questions for the applicants?
Even more exciting if we could suspend the other hearings and vote tonight.
Let's hope the council... Okay, well, I'll let the, we'll open this up to the public if no one has any questions for you. Okay? I will open up to the public and see if there's anyone here that has any, anything, any questions for us. Is there anyone here that would like, okay, so if you'll step away, and I'll have this gentleman come forward. Sorry, yeah, we have to record it. I apologize, Joel.
Again, Joel Schaefer, two forty-two, was like an advocate. Simple question, what age group are they targeting? I mean, I thought it was interesting, birthday parties and liquor, I thought. Sounds interesting.
I think they're hoping for adults all the way down to students.
Have you ever been to a kid's birthday party?
Lisa, sorry. I have little kids.
Is there anyone else here that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. What is the wish of council?
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on ordinance eighteen dash eighty-four.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Keller, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of eighteen dash eighty-four.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, guys, get busy. What do you anticipate opening?
Right now, we're looking at, depending on the strike.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just think it's great that our youth will have something to do here in Delaware. I think it's wonderful. So we're going to go on to number eighteen, which is the fourth reading of Resolution number eighteen dash fifty.
Resolution number eighteen dash fifty, a resolution adopting the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-three five-year capital improvement program, the CIP.
And this will go to a fifth reading. We have work sessions scheduled for October first. We're not passing, are you kidding? If I'm all of them, shoot us. She's over here whispering, this pass is died. Wouldn't that be funny? Don't think we're ready here. Okay, we're going to move on to item, if you'll do nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one together.
Ordinance number eighteen dash seventy, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a rezoning amendment for the Seattle House Apartments, two hundred and forty units on approximately twenty-four point two one two acres from R six multifamily residential district and B three community business district to R six and B three PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on the north side of US thirty-six, thirty-seven and the south side of Bowtown Road just east of the Chevron Auto Storage Lot. Ordinance number eighteen dash seventy-one, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district, to be established for the Seattle House Apartments, two hundred and forty units on approximately twenty-four point two one two acres and located on the north side of US thirty-six, thirty-seven and the south side of Bowtown Road just east of the Chevron Auto Storage Lot. An ordinance number eighteen dash seventy-two, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of preliminary development plan for the Seattle House Apartments, two hundred and forty units on approximately twenty-four point two one two acres, zoned R six and B three PMU, multifamily residential district and community business district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on the north side of US thirty-six, thirty-seven and the south side of Bowtown Road just east of the Chevron Auto Storage Lot.
Thank you. Mr. Efflin?
And Mayor, Members of Council, I have nothing to add at this time. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Just to remind you that your planning commission did recommend unanimous approval, and so it requires four affirmative votes to pass the piece of legislation in front of your seat.
Any questions from Mr. Efflin at this time?
All right, what is the wish of council?
I will move for approval of ordinance number eighteen seventy.
Second.
Before we move ahead, could we ask the applicant to come forward? We've been talking about this issue with utilities. I'd like to just raise that.
So.
They got to give their names and address a lot of good stuff. Hang on.
Good evening, Steve Kuckler, ninety-four North Sandusky Street, Delaware, Ohio. Here on behalf of the applicant, Metro.
Trey Guller, President and CEO of Metro Development, four seventy Old Worthen Road.
I think everybody's aware now, that concern was brought up regarding how utilities are built at multifamily projects, and I understand that PUCO governs what can happen with electric and gas. Our ordinance is a little less clear. We talked about that. My long-term goal is to fix the public policy decisions while I address this. My short-term goal and long-term goal is, as we're trying to promote affordable housing, we'd like to see these utility costs kept as low as possible, which we, my perspective, how my colleagues feel would be that if the developer's getting a discount on utilities, that he passes that cost on to tenants as opposed to raising the rates to the maximum. So that, that's where I'd like to see this going. I don't know what this particular project has planned, but, and I don't know what everybody else feels about that, but my goal would be to see if we can, if there's a discount being offered on water, electric, and gas, is that discount gets passed on to the tenants as opposed to one of them.
Okay. Trey, you might maybe want to, President, or about the boss in today, to answer maybe some of the, specifically some of those questions. Absolutely, Trey, if you want to try to address that.
Sure. Yeah, we do use a submetering company to do our electric, American Power and Light. We follow the PUCO guidelines, which is, about eighteen months ago were enacted, from a deregulated situation where it was following tenant landlord law specifically, to a regulated through the PUCO guidelines, which requires the utility, the submetering company, to charge no different rate than the standard service offer of the default utility, whoever that may be. Where the savings comes in for the customer is the cost of infrastructure installation allows us to bring down the cost of the development, which then allows us to offer rents that are commensurate with, you know, the market conditions. So that's really where you see the savings with AEP. We have, I have a site right now that city has been sitting almost twelve months without electric because AEP's busy, can't get to it. Therefore, I can't open sites specifically because of that, and the interest carry on that kind of delay, just as something that's passed on to the customers. So what we have done is we, we match and meet the PUCO guidelines for that particular service, which is electric. We rub the water, so whatever the city water is, we'll turn it and rub that to our customers. So it's, it's not a markup on the water. Yeah, no, we don't mark the water up. We just pass that directly on to the customers with no markup, and we do follow the PUCO guidelines in regards to the utility, electric utility service. Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Somebody started a motion.
I'll move for passage of ordinance number eighteen dash seventy.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Browning, a second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I'll move for passage of ordinance number eighteen seventy-one.
Second.
I have a motion by, by Mr. Browning, second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for passage of ordinance number eighteen seventy-two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rohr, second by Mr., motion by Mr. Browning, second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Elaine, if you'll please read this under the record.
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance number eighteen dash seventy-three, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a rezoning amendment for the High Point Place Apartments, one hundred and sixty units on approximately sixteen point seventy acres from R six multifamily residential district to R six PMU, multifamily residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on the north side of Bowtown Road just west of Village Gate Apartments. Ordinance number eighteen dash seventy-four, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district, to be established for the High Point Place Apartments, one hundred and sixty units on approximately sixteen point seventy acres and located on the north side of Bowtown Road just west of Village Gate Apartments. An ordinance number eighteen dash seventy-five, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a preliminary development plan for the High Point Place Apartments, one hundred and sixty units on approximately sixteen point seventy acres, zoned R six PMU, multifamily residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on the north side of Bowtown Road just west of Village Gate Apartments. An ordinance number eighteen dash seventy-five, an ordinance for Metro Development LLC for approval of a preliminary development plan for the High Point Place Apartments, one hundred and sixty units on approximately sixteen point seventy acres, zoned R six PMU, multifamily residential with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on the north side of Bowtown Road just west of Village Gate Apartments.
Thank you. Mr. Efflin?
And Mayor, Members of Council, I have no additional comments to add other than there's been a summary of public comment provided for you at your seats this evening to remind you that your planning commission did fail to approve this. They recommended denial, in other words, at their, at their meeting, at which they deliberated on these cases before you. And by our rules of our community, that requires five out of seven of you to overturn their recommendation, should you wish to approve this case. I also think that the, there's been some communication between the administration and the applicant regarding, trying to elicit from you some specifics as to what may, what they might be able to change. Obviously, we've had a lot of conversation about this and the other case, but what they might be able to change to be successful, coming back either before you with a different case or with an amended version of this plan. So happy to answer any questions you might have, but I think it's probably an opportunity to have a discussion with the, with the applicant.
Any questions for Mr. Efflin before these starts? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, good to see you again. Again, on High Point, right, now the fourth time, right, we've kind of gone through all the key facts, right, obviously supported by the business community, key factor of attracting and maintaining young professionals here in the community. Also, all the contributions going to be made to the city in terms of via TAF fees, impact fees, obviously key road infrastructure made. My thought here is maybe elicit some of the concerns or issues you may have. The roads has been the big one that was used in planning commission as well as voiced here as well. Again, it's already zoned now. Last meeting, I showed you what multifamily developer could build here, obviously not preserving as much green space, et cetera, by working with the city staff, Mr. Efflin and his folks, you know, we came, what I think is a, is a very good product, much like Seattle, that you just approved. So again, but I understand there might be some concerns, so I think it's an opportunity to have a discussion, take some of those concerns, see if we can work on some of those things over the next couple of weeks, would be the, would be the plan. Trey, you have any, any more thoughts?
No, I, I think that's, Steve, you know, accurately articulated our position as we sit today. I mean, we, we, we and our organization and I personally feel that's a great use for this particular property. We think, you know, the more housing, new housing units that can be constructed in Del, the city of Delaware, based on our communications with the business leaders, is a, would be a plus. So we're here to, you know, we, we feel like there's a value to go forward, or otherwise we wouldn't be sitting here, and we just would like to get some feedback if there's something we can do to modify or change the present, the product in front of you besides going away, which obviously you, you can vote for us to go away as well, but we still think this is a, a good use for this property. We understand that requesting a couple of variances, and I think the hard, the reason we're requesting the variance is based on some of the, you know, economic cost as it, as it deals with this particular development, and specifically the road connection that is requested, as well as the park and the tree preservation that we've provided in the back. So we'd be more than happy to, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, or Steve, obviously Joe Thomas has been here in front of you more than I am, however, I'm here to answer any questions from the, the company's perspective.
Anybody like to give them any feedback?
I mean, I think we've, at least, I feel like I've given lots of feedback about my concerns. They involve just the number of variances involved, significantly departing from what our code states for multifamily.
And you're speaking of the height variance, the density variance?
All of it.
Are the two kind of end of, I guess, separate clubhouse or amenity facility that, that were provided, so those three variances are, are really the main variances, I believe, that we're, we're talking about?
Yes.
Anybody else?
I think the other concern that's maybe harder to address is the way this impacts traffic on Bowtown Road, which is, you know, narrow and small, not in good shape road, but I think that's one, what I hear from a lot of people in the area is that's a primary concern, and I'm not really sure what people think about that. It's the number one concern.
That's, yeah.
No, I appreciate that. That's why I think at the last meeting, I suggested the, you know, rather than require my client to, you know, spend upwards of seven hundred thousand dollars on Ferguson, you know, maybe there's an opportunity, you know, when and if Ferguson ever connects and goes back to the greater network, you know, maybe there's a, there's some flexibility there where that, that money could be set aside in a, rather than construct this public right-of-way, dedicate the right-of-way and then use the excess funds that would have been used to help fix Bowtown Road or whatever the city feels fit. I also had a meeting with, the last meeting, you all had asked some information on it, on a non-school TIF revenue. Obviously, we ran those numbers, provided that to City Manager Holman, who I believe he or someone on the staff provided that to council. So I think there's a lot of solutions here in terms of real funding, real dollars that can be used to actually fix roads. You know, a lot of, you know, Bowtown only comes up every ten, twelve years in terms of its importance, in terms of public meetings, to be honest with you. And, you know, I guess my client is here, ready to help out and actually do more than their fair share compared to any other development that's ever gone on, on Bowtown. So I, so if that's not doable, I guess that's fine. I guess we thought that was a good faith gesture of trying to help out the problem, which road seems to have been the main issue at planning, as well as council.
So Steve, I guess, I would like to hear at some point, more specifics where, you know, you talk with our staff.
Okay.
If you're putting seven hundred thousand towards Bowtown Road, what specifically are we getting for seven hundred thousand?
Okay.
At this point, I think we just don't have enough specifics to evaluate that.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Sure.
Any other feedback?
For me, it's just, it's a lot of apartments on that side right now that all have to come through the point, which is not even going to be touched until twenty twenty-two, when it starts. I just think that's, you know, it's five hundred apartments, it's a thousand cars. Right now, it's a disaster. I'd rather see High Point get up, get full, and then we look at the rest of it later. That's just my opinion at this time. It's a lot to do all at the same time.
Yeah, I, I think I understand that. I also look at the market conditions as they are today. Twenty twenty-two, I think you said. I, I don't know what the market condition will be in twenty twenty-two. I know what the market conditions are now for, for a sustainable product, which I think is from a city's perspective, the developments we've done here, and we've done several. Sustainability is important, the tax revenue that continues to come in from property taxes and then individuals that live there. So we're, we think, and again, you know, this is just our opinion, as we look at the development environment, we also look at the businesses around, the, the point is, is going to get fixed eventually, right? Our tax revenues that we're going to pay will help the schools. If we did the TIF, that would help that area. So having the development is more of a benefit from a, from a revenue standpoint from the city than not having the development, because I, I don't have the statistics in front of me, however, I would say the CAVU taxes that they're paying now is, is not anywhere close to the taxes that we're going to end up paying from a, from a fully developed project of well over, you know, fifteen, twenty million dollars. So I, I understand your concern, but I do think it would be forty, fifty million dollars with a vertical construction in the city of Delaware, which, again, in these current market conditions, I think are, would be a positive, and I understand the roads, but if we, you know, if we wait to do everything when the roads are fixed, you know, someone's got to make that first step. And I, again, the point is, you know, I come up here all the time, you know, we do a lot of business in Southern Delaware County, so I'm with the commissioners, we're here. So I understand that it's a traffic concern. However, this one hundred and sixty unit complex isn't going to push the traffic over one way or the other, but it could help.
It's already pushed over. Before you even build the first apartment, it's loaded.
Yeah.
And you're not the only apartment that they're looking at right now in this town. They're also building on Howe Road. So we have a lot of apartments before us at this time. So it's not that I don't want the other one, I just think we've got a lot coming right now, and I'd like to see those get filled.
Sure.
That's just my, my opinion.
Yeah, and that's why we're here. I wanted to get your feedback to make sure we understand where we are from a, from a process standpoint.
Okay. Any other comments? I knew I did have somebody, Dave Gordon, would like to come forward and give his opinion. I know it's not a public hearing, but it's, I know, it's not something that's, he's already said before, so he promised me that.
Warmed him up for you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Two issues. Today I got, this is for everybody that asked around, most recent. There's one for you. Excuse me. These are all, these are all separate. Three different ones. Those, those are the, Dave Gordon, seventy Northwood Drive, Delaware, Ohio. Mr. Snodgrass, my partner, we have LED, which is Delaware Commerce Park. I went out and bought a pointer. I don't know if it'll work.
It's not going to work on the glass.
It won't work on the glass.
Oh.
Sorry about that. Do you have one that works on it?
It works better.
Okay. Well, I'm concerned with the developer using, oh, okay, the, the top one?
Top one?
Yeah, yes. Okay, so over here, so you can see. Wait, I am concerned as an individual that the developer's using the land next door. About three-quarters of this road is on the property next door. I believe the fair thing to do would be to put half of it on his and half on the property next door to be fair to everyone, unless they bought the property next door. You heard the gentleman that owns the property next door, he said it would devalue his property, and I certainly think it will. So the, if you look at the thoroughfare plan, it doesn't say where this road should be, and it doesn't. And it doesn't curve like it's shown by the developer. So it shows a straight road back. So he, the developer is using it to his advantage, making the property next door pay for most of this Ferguson Drive eventually. All he's paying, putting up is for a little piece on the backside of the property. That's one. The next issue is, there's only one way right now, in and out. Nobody has said that they got the approval of the apartments next door. That's, that's a big issue, and I think it would be with the fire department. So, and we have all of our other issues that we gave before, but I think those are main ones. And there are a lot of apartments. That's all I have to say.
So what you handed out, since you went to this trouble?
Yes.
What not, what am I looking for? What numbers?
Oh, you can't find it? Look at 58.
You guys might.
Look at 58, 57. That's where you are. That's Bowtown Road. 58, 57. And then if you look at the new one, this is the brand new one with the blue on it, the 2018, it's, it's, uh, that little green part right here, that's the road. The little green part.
Okay.
See it?
Got it.
That's the brand new one. And these are the old ones.
Okay, thank you.
So, the developer decided, well gee, we can't afford to have this, this road ourselves on the property. It won't give us enough room for our apartments. We'll just make the guy next door take care of it. Not fair, even though it's not in the city, his property's not in the city. I'm not representing him, but it's not fair.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to speak.
Yes, please.
Jeff Cutler, 7525 Perry Road, Delaware, Ohio. Owned the property at the point, the old nursery at 457, 465 East Central. And I own land just to the east of the Chesar Round Lot. And I agree with Mr. Gordon, there's, there's some things that plan that need some work here. But I've been waiting on the point improvements for a long time. I'm waiting on Glen Parkway to get extended. And I'm looking at the pros and cons of this. I really think we should work on this plan and not give up on it. Because I look at what the tap fee revenue is, one thing you're not thinking about, if we have, let's say we average one person, we're getting income tax out of per unit, but we're going to get an income tax, and we got retail right across the street, they're going to spend money over that retail. We don't get the rooftops, we're not going to be able to support that retail. We don't see any retail restaurants building those outlots. It's simple. I've done this for a living for 37 years. We need population to support the retail, and we're not going to get any, you know, RVs or anything like that until we have the population. So anyhow, I keep looking, the rents at 900 to 1200, I get calls every day. We do not have any apartments from that side of town all the way down to Peach Flow Road. We need some new construction. What is available in the city is a lot of older apartments. I know we've got some under construction on the west side, but the east side, we need to get some rooftops going. We got to get some construction. And I just, I just think with all the road improvements we need at the point in Glen Parkway, how can the city turn down this revenue, the tap fees, the income tax? We need to give the east side a jump start and get things going out there. But I appreciate everybody's time, and I appreciate what everybody does on council, volunteering their time, they put a lot of effort into that, but that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Jeff, while you're there, before you leave, so we have concerns about the rent price that they are, I mean, some of us on council, for the size of the apartments. You do this for a living. What is your opinion? Is that?
They will rent all 400 of these units so fast your head will spin.
Okay. Regardless of the size?
Yeah, I was involved, the apartments down at Polaris, the last five years has been, what, 2,000 apartments built? And they rented up so fast, 2,000 units. And I worked with all the tiny schools, they were concerned whether it's going to do to the schools. And it didn't hurt the schools. We were shocked. We thought we'd fill the schools up, but the people in apartments don't have kids. It's amazing.
Thank you. Yes.
95 is in the street, because I'm speaking as a private citizen.
Okay.
I represent no party here. For the longest time, going back to 2008, I submitted to this council, what I saw was a tremendous need. I had two clients that helped pay for that study. That study never got a hearing before this council, but it talked about very real issues that you're addressing here this evening, and that is apartments. We adopted standards by the Ohio EPA, which I didn't think were fair, and I've spoken on that on many occasions. We have a tremendous need for apartments. We, we've always invited premier builders to come to Delaware and build single-family houses. And we've been very fortunate that those builders have come. Now we have one of the premier apartment builders in central Ohio, probably the largest, and we're saying that this plan is not good enough. Traffic is your problem, not the developer's problem. That, that was long decided in the, in the 1959 case before the Ohio Supreme Court. And we need apartments. I just, unlike many of you, I've just spent the early part of this year going through that exercise, as my wife and I sold our home here after 35 years of, of living in the same house. And let me tell you, if we need housing, not everybody can afford the type of apartment I can afford, but we have to have housing for everyone. And there just isn't, the apartment that I ended up running is 850 square feet. I, I got, I got room on top of room. I, you know, I'm there most of the time by myself, but because my wife is in Arizona, but that's, that's a choice that we've made. But I, I really think that we can't be short sighted on this. This, this property sitting up right next to an apartment complex. It, from the backside of this moving to the, to the west, you're, you're looking at an elevated railroad track. I think it's probably bold to say, but I'm surprised that you have a developer of at least the quality of Metro and their various subsidiaries that would be willing to look at taking a piece of property like this and elevating it. Elevating it from the standpoint of quality, elevating it from the standpoint of, of housing potential for our citizens. With housing stock, and we, you know, I'm, I'm involved in the Tara Alta project, we're looking at single-family homes that are going to be in a half million. We're, we're looking at condos at 350,000. And not everybody can afford that. You look down on Cheshire Road, you're looking easily in a half million dollar market for those houses. It, it's, we, we, we need housing, we need single-family housing, but we also need apartments. And they want them to be cost effective. That's why we've adopted for years the metering system, the multi-metering system that we, that we adopted. And, and I think the questions are good. You don't want those people to be burdened by unnecessary costs. But this organization has dealt with that in multiple communities, and to the best of my knowledge, I've never heard a complaint about it. So I'm not trying to sell Metro, I'm not trying to sell one developer over another. But when you have the largest, and, and what many people consider to be the best, myself included, I think we ought to be looking at this and making this thing work. If, if, if they're willing to go into or consider a TIF or be a participant in a TIF that can handle some of those problems. But like so many of the times, Bowtown Road, when Dave built his.
We didn't build it.
When Dave bought it, you know, Bowtown Road was never improved, never improved. But we've, we've let the city absorb around it, but it's never been improved. And we accepted that because we annexed all that area and let it come in. Now, that problem needs to be solved. And a lot of the people who'll go down Bowtown Road, I'm not going to argue that, will go down Bowtown Road because they want to get out of the light, particularly if they want to go eastbound. There's, there's no way to get across at any time coming out at the lower end of Bowtown or, as Dave was concerned, about going through his project. That isn't going to happen. You're never going to get across the road. You're going to be sitting there forever. So they're going to go up to, up to 521, and they're going to come out. But if you have, if you have a developer that's willing to, to make a commitment. Now, you talk about that road project and stuff like that, the reason the road dipped down was to make the swing to go and have enough land for the curvature. The proposal, this was already zoned, this can, apartments can be built there. So what you have to ask yourself is, what level of quality do you want? When you're sitting, you talk about 42 foot high buildings, look, look how high that railroad track is elevated. Go out there and take a look. So I think what, what needs to happen here is, is that, you know, you have somebody that's willing to work with you, there is no question that, that we have a tremendous need for apartments. One of the problems is, for years, we didn't build apartments. And now we're in a catch-up. And, and, and frankly, the numbers are starting to work on the income side. But these people are taking a tremendous gamble, a tremendous risk to build in this area. But they see it as an opportunity, and I think we ought to, we ought to at least try to give them an opportunity to, to come back to you with some ideas and some things that might make that more plausible. The, you know, I think the, the concern is, the concern is, is the date rate with the, with the two-point access is, is that this has a dual access coming in. It's not one single access, they come up both sides. So you, it's, you can get back out. If there's a fire in, at this end of the facility or there's an emergency vehicle in there, you can come in and go around the other way. So it's, it's not exactly, there's not two entrances. And you can address all those issues, I'm just saying that there is a need. And, 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 you know, I as a citizen and as a taxpayer in this community have heard, when I was sitting in your chair, when I was sitting as a member of this council, that the point was a problem. The point's been a problem. But to stop growth, to stop development, because we're anticipating traffic problems that we have no basis that that's going to be a problem. You don't know when these people leave, what, what their patterns of leaving and entering are. And I just think that we need to take a big, deep breath on this thing before we chuck this thing out the door, that we're having somebody that's willing to invest money in our community of the quality of Metro to, to, to come in here. You know, that's like saying to, to, to Roman LA news, we don't want your houses. So I, I think I would, I would encourage this council to, to, to work with everybody here. You all raised some good questions, but looking at it on its, on its face, and I think that's why staff recommended a, a, you know, a planned mixed use, because what you were getting out of this was some of the quality that you don't get with just straight up zoning, which they can do. So you have to ask yourself, what do you want? And I'm always for quality. I'm always for something that's going to improve our community. But we have lots of people, and I can tell you, haven't gone through the exercise of trying to find an apartment. That is no walk in the park. And there isn't, there's a number of apartments, but not always the best quality.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for your wise words. Mr. Schaefer?
This has become a public hearing.
This is not a public hearing, but you have something that we haven't heard before.
Yeah, as a citizen, I, I find this conversation very interesting, and I cannot disagree with improving the east side, because I think it's a nice orb for people coming in. But going back to the thing that I brought up on the infrastructure, I think this panel is absolutely correct. I was at one of the Willis committee groups about the city and where it's going, and out of the six groups they had, five of them said the major problem in Delaware is the point. The point is also, I think it's been acknowledged by this committee, it's a major thoroughfare of trucks. To have the trucking problem that we have in the city, the road problem we have with the federal highway trust funds, which are going to shrink in 2021, I, I don't see where we're going to get the money to do the infrastructure to accommodate the site, but it has to be done. I understand that. But how is it going to be done? I mean, obviously, how you improve housing and not have the roads to accommodate it first. So maybe in your wisdom, you'd be able to come up with something to answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, John McRae, Dr. John McRae. I recall a discussion when the Speedway development was going in, which ended up being a nice development, that the city kind of uniformly agreed, particularly the fire department, that, that developments that did not have ingress, egress should not be placed in, in the city of Delaware because of, particularly in that site, because of a toxic, toxic spill. And there was a lot of discussion about the fact that, that that should not be part of the development plan for the city. I just wanted to remind you of that discussion, too, as I totally agree with Joel, that the, not against the development, but there is no plan for the city that really, really has an eye for what the city's supposed to look like in 10 or 25 years. And so the haphazard development in locations here and there, annexations, just don't make a lot of sense for a city of the caliber of Delaware. And how are you going to support your schools, and who's going to pay for, for that infrastructure? I really think that needs to be factored into your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we just wanted to add, sorry to turn into a public hearing. Just real quick to, just to refute a couple of things. It was discussed that there's only one point of access. As part of the plan, again, we work cooperatively in a spirit of good faith with the city staff, city engineer, fire department, departments I've never even heard of or involved in the discussion. There is fire, there's an additional fire access point, just to the, just to the east right there. You can see where the arrow is there, fantastic, right? So there is an actual additional fire access and hoping to work with Village Gate as well on, on working on some more cooperation. So again, I think this is good, high quality, makes sense, and look forward to continuing the discussion.
Also, I'd like to add, we work with city staff in order to place the, the, in order to deal with the thoroughfare in the road, and I've forgotten the name right off the top of my head of the road, but what is it?
Ferguson.
Ferguson Road. We worked with the city staff in order to locate the, the road where it is located. And part of the desire was to situate the three-story apartment buildings a little further away from the property line, also to reserve the large tree area in the back. I believe the way the preliminary drawing for the road had it I believe the way the preliminary drawing for the road had it going straight through the middle of that tree preserve area, which would have taken out, I would say, almost the entire stand of trees, which we were able to preserve by locating the road partially on our property, dedicating a piece of easement, or a dedicated easement to the back, so when the road is connected by the next developer, that it would be available. We're also doing the intersection work on Bowtown. And so when, I think it's, it's intellectually inconsistent to say that we're shirking our duties with off-site improvements based on the, the organization of the road system. So we did take that into consideration, did work with staff very closely in order to have that road placed where it is in the future drawing as well.
Do you, Steve, want to take, do you want to vote on this tonight, or do you want to table it? Because I heard both.
Table it.
Yeah, I think we've--
Yeah, we can--
Our goal is to come and get feedback, and I think we've gotten feedback. Again, we believe that's, and I'm not going to rehash what I've already said, we believe it's a great use. We believe the apartments will run up. We understand that there's traffic issues. However, traffic issues exist before we get here, and traffic issues in the world will exist after we're long gone and the development's up and running. So we can't, I can't do anything except for bring development to the area, which allows more tax revenue in order to pay for some of those improvements.
And we'll get with city staff hopefully in the next couple of weeks and try to hammer out something then, if that's okay with you.
So, for the record, you would like this tabled to October 22nd.
Sure.
Right? Is that okay? Okay. We have one on record, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
If I could make just one quick comment before we move on. There was a question asked just about the level of quality that we want. And I guess my concern is, and I've stated it several times before, is these are smaller than our code allows, they're more dense than our code allows, they're taller than our code allows, and they use materials that are less than our code allows. So it's like a hit in every direction. And I understand that when you come to the city of Delaware and you, you're conceiving of a project, you know what our rules and regulations are, considering what our requirements are for that project. And I understand that the planned mixed use gives you the latitude to work around some of those requirements. Some, maybe not all. And it just seems like this is just stacked up far too many variances. And I'm not against the project specifically, but I'm against just a total disregard for what our code requires for apartment complexes. So that's my feedback there.
Thank you. Okay. I'm also going to vote. Okay. I'm just asking. I mean, I think it's kind of just trees. So is there a quick-- I'm going to get back. And then we'll need a motion to table it. Oh. Well, I guess we could make a motion and then just stop when we get to that point. Is there a motion to table this?
Make a motion to table all those.
It might be helpful, and I'm sorry to step on your motion, Councilman Jones. Do you want to table it for a date certain, or do you just want to table it and then you have to pick it up when you're ready to pick it up again?
October 22nd.
October 22nd.
Okay.
Table in ordinances, 1873, 74, and 75. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, backed by Mr. Brownie. No, we'll just stop when we get to him. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Don't walk in there and say his name.
You don't even need to vote, but you might as well wait.
Table in this to October 22nd. Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
It's okay. Item 25, this discussion, a report regarding regulations on massage establishments. Didn't we? We did. He said yes. What were you doing?
We just paused, he said it right when he walked in. Did you get that?
Okay, so if I could introduce, reintroduce counsel to Chris Ballard. Chris wrote a memo to you dated September 7th, 2018, regarding some different ways to look at massage establishments. And just so that we could preface this, is that Chris has done a lot of research, and he's here to be answering questions you might have about the memo that you received. At this point, staff is just looking for a direction. Oh, what would you like? If you want legislation, what would you like that legislation to see? If you don't want a legislation, we're, at this point, we, we're just looking for direction.
And perhaps as a way to help guide you or give you some options, Chris, you jump in here too as well, but Chris and Chief, was Adam Moore that worked on it on your side? Chris and Adam Moore worked on it. Captain Moore. There are kind of, I guess, three options that we kind of came up with so far. One would be don't do anything yet. Two would be adopt a regulatory scheme similar to Westerville's. The third option that came up was a, changing the massage use on our zoning code from a permitted use to a conditional use, which is a less intrusive from regulatory standpoint, but does provide a little bit more control for council. And since we hadn't discussed that yet, because it was kind of a novel idea, Chris, would you mind describing that a little bit, how that third option would work?
Yes, it actually, actually it was Captain Moore who came up with it.
Take the credit, he's not here.
No, no. But it would be, if it's, if it's a conditional use rather than a permitted use, then they'd have to go through the, the planning commission, et cetera, there. So we wouldn't be standing up new regulatory or licensing bodies or creating really additional duties for city departments. It would just be the, going through a process that's, that's already there, so.
And I think the, don't put words in your mouth, but the theory behind that is if someone's going to go through the planning commission and the city council conditional approval, like the businesses we've, you know, seen today, they're probably less likely to be illegitimate. And it would require, the only amount of work would be adding to the planning packet, going through a planning commission meeting, and having a, a city council meeting, as opposed to, you know, new inspections and paperwork and things like that. So that's why we thought that was a possibly attractive option for council.
What was number two again?
Uh, two was to apply a regulatory licensing scheme where they would have to show, you know, they're affiliated with, similar to what Westerville was handed out, I think you might have actually handed out to council, but it would have them submit additional paperwork to prove that they are licensed by the state or operating under one of the exempt entities in order--
And who do they submit that paperwork to?
Well--
That would depend on them. Yeah, it would depend on what sort of scheme we wanted to adopt. In some cities, it goes to, I think it was North Olmsted, like their Department of Public Safety. I believe I've seen it, though I can't quote as to where off the top of my head, going through the police department in Westerville's case, I believe it goes through their planning department.
What I'm getting at is, I mean, how stringent about, you know, is it similar to background check that police do for, like, the licensing stuff? I mean, is it something that somebody's staff just signs off on and there's no background to it at all?
Really, I mean, that, and that, that's sort of the question. It depends on how much oversight we want to apply. We've got a great deal of legal discretion in this area. Now it's more of a policy question of what sort of regulation we wish to pursue, if any, because there's levels, as you said, of, it's just kind of wrote, just, all right, here's the documents, signing off. Or you could have a more affirm, a more affirmative inspection process, background investigation, if that's what we wanted to apply here.
I just think, I just think just licensing can be scanned, or say, pretty easy, there's only the process, you know? Here's my license. Oh, if you ditch license, send it off, you know?
Yeah, and I--
It's no big deal.
One of the challenges that I think Chris and I faced with option two, which is a more of a regulatory scheme, is that we're a little, little worried about unintended consequences and that, you know, we think we're targeting this kind of activity, but we don't want to accidentally catch up in legitimate business that we're just not, we haven't thought through all the permutations accidentally and, and, you know, put them out of business. I think in the memo that Tom got from Westerville, there was a legitimate entity that just couldn't pass the certification to get that certificate. So, and I'm just not as familiar with the industry. So we don't want to accidentally harm a business that's not doing anything wrong. So I'm not sure even how they are licensed. We do know that they're licensed by this, there are a category of massage, they're licensed by the state. And I assume they get a certificate that they can show us, but I don't know if we have a license, database that we can go through and check that out. Chris, do you know how that works at all?
I mean, it, it's issued through the state medical board, so there, I don't believe would be any practical problems in verifying it, though I haven't looked at that specifically. With the Westerville kind of model there, you either have to be a licensed massage therapist, which there are standards for that, and that's issued through the state medical board, or you have to have a license from, and there's a number of exempt entities. They're all state licensing entities. It's either like the barber, cosmetology board, nursing, occupational therapy, chiropractic, I'm, I'm reading it off here, state medical board. And so you either, you have to have basically some sort of state-issued license to provide massages of any sort in the city of Westerville. And there's different levels. Some of them, some of the municipalities I looked at, you just had to go, effectively go register with whoever the overseeing body was. There wasn't any sort of license or educational requirement. Some of them, the licensing or educational requirement, it wasn't a specific, like it has to be issued by one of these state agencies, like the city of Cincinnati says you have to have a minimum of 160 hours of education from a school of massage approved by the state medical board. But their, their system actually just exempted licensed massage therapists from the license, their registration requirement completely. So it's really just a question of what sort of direction council wants staff to take. We legally have a great deal of discretion in this area.
What's your thoughts?
Just a couple of things. Looking at the, by the way, this is, Chris is a good, good information voice. A couple of things that I just wanted to point out. One is, we've had six prostitution investigations over 10 years, and none of those have been committed to massage parlor. And it goes on to point out, there's, on the books already, it's a lot of state law. It seems to me like the idea of putting new businesses through zoning is a way that, without creating a whole infrastructure to, with new laws and guarantees about potential and unintended consequences that we usually haven't thought through, we now can control what goes on in that business, because it has to come before planning, and it then comes to us. And we can put wherever stipulations we want to, as opposed to creating a series of laws and approvals and problems. That's just my thought.
Chris, your thoughts? Kind of brought it forward.
I, I, the conditional use, that was number three, we would call it initial use. That one, that one intrigued me, because that's, I think, a good intent. I mean, if you're going to run a business that, you know, shenanigans, you're not going to deal with the planning commission, you have to sit council and try to work that whole system through, which is not, I agree with you. But I, I would, I would want to see, like, a piece of legislation, what it would look like.
Exactly.
Lisa?
I don't want to under-regulate and allow, you know, unfit businesses to continue, but I'm concerned about over-regulating and creating unintended consequences and, and extra work. So I'm thinking that there has to be somewhere a solution that's in the middle that allows us to really shut down something that is very grossly a violation while allowing, you know, businesses that are licensed to do the work that they're doing to continue.
George?
I would not support any legislation at this point with regard, with any type of ordinances or anything like that. I believe that, you know, not every unlicensed, non-therapeutic massage place is a happy-handy massage parlor. So, you know, I think there's, there's a wide variety there. And I think that, you know, it's, it's up to our law enforcement to keep, you know, illicit businesses in check. And I just think the legislation would, having them go and get a conditional use permit or go through zoning, that is a point in time. And then once that's, once that's done, who knows what happens a year from now? Because it's all, you know, it's all, that's just, at that point in time, you made them an inconvenience, and to what end? So I would not support any, any legislation.
Okay. Mr. Brownie?
I like the, the, putting through zoning and make sure they have a plan there. But I think having some, can we ask for a once-a-year proof of whoever's doing the massage? They have to be certified by the state, I think. And we don't have to do it, but we can show up and say, "Do you hire people legit?" I think that, because we got into the human trafficking and, and, you know, how do we take a business that morphs into something else, and we need to, how we protect ourselves without putting a lot of extra work on ourselves?
You know, one thing, to your point, that, the chief can bear that out, is that if we've got a business that we consider a front of prostitution, we've already got avenues to investigate that and to make those charges, it's a front for human trafficking. I mean, we don't need additional laws to do that. We can do that now.
Okay. Mr. Rohr?
I like the idea of kind of backing up to the state regulations. I can tell you, for example, if you're a therapeutic massage parlor, you're required to be licensed as a special branch of medicine. State medical board inspectors can come in anytime they want, 365, and inspect the premises if they think something untoward is going on. So I think that's a, defaulting to their expertise, I think is better than trying to have our own regulatory system in place in Delaware. And having been involved in at least one human trafficking investigation, that was a tool that we used that was successful.
Well, I also feel that they should, they should be able to hold a license. And if you can't pass the test, then you shouldn't be doing it.
Having said that, though, if you're not a therapeutic massage parlor, there are exceptions that don't have to be regulated by the medical board, so.
Right.
Say that again.
If you are not a therapeutic, if you're not a special branch of medicine, you don't have to be licensed by the medical board. There's other licensing entities, cosmetology, parlor.
That's what he was reading, yeah.
But it's not quite as--
Yeah.
Stringent, I suppose, again.
Okay, does that give you enough? I think so. You think? Chris, do you feel comfortable, Aaron and Chris?
I think one thing that I'm clearly hearing is that one option you'd like us to at least show you is how the zoning piece would work. And that, we can work on that, because we have not created that yet. Probably worth a little bit of thought as to, I've heard some comments, we might want to go beyond that with the licensure requirements from council members Browning and Mayor Riggle. We have kind of a draft, we've been tinkering around with that, so we can distribute that as well. And then maybe we can get some additional feedback as to which, or, I mean, they're not mutually exclusive, although then you're, then you're taking, we're not sure we want to regulate, you're going with a double-barrel shotgun, but we can provide drafts of both, maybe get a sense from council members or mayor and vice mayor want to take a look at it. We can go from there. Does that approach sound okay with council?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And if anybody in the public has any suggestions or anything, you can email them to Elaine We'll move on to city managers' reports.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Riggle. The first thing that I would like to do very briefly is Elaine McCloskey's been working on the sister city visit next week. And Elaine, I know that you've distributed a short schedule. Can you just kind of give council and everyone here a short update on how it goes?
Absolutely, thanks. So as you hopefully are aware, that we have eight people coming from Bamholder, Bamholder, Germany, so our sister city. So they will be arriving this Saturday around 5:09. If anybody would like to go to the airport with me and say hello. Really, that night, they're not going to do much, they're just going to be with their host families. So we are still actually looking--
So we are still actually looking for one host family, for a gentleman, they're district mayor, but I'm sure we'll get that taken care of. Sunday, you guys have all received an invitation for a cookout that we're going to have that evening at 6 o'clock PM. We'd really like to introduce you to everybody and just make them feel very welcome and kind of looking at the weather, so, thanks. So we will have to look at that if, if location changed, but I would notify you.
Could we possibly move it to a shelter at Mingo?
Well, it would still be wet if it's raining.
At least there'd be a big area inside.
So we have a week to look. You know, the weather changes in Ohio daily to the hours, so you just never know.
We could light a fire, too, and make it cozy.
I agree.
It would. Possibility.
Sure want to put a splash bar.
Yeah, we could do it at the splash pad, too, maybe, two firepits.
Got to look at it. So we can look at those options, and we'll talk a little bit more. Monday, we're going to kind of do a tour of the city with Sean and Kelsey. They're going to go, the trolley's going to take them around, show them some of our parks, sites. Then we're going to do lunch at Source Point, where they're going to join Tom Homan with Rotary. And then they're also going to take a tour of Hinkle. So a couple of them had done that tour the last time, but there's some new members to this delegation, so that, that should be interesting for them. And then that evening, we actually have a meeting, so they're going to be hosted by the German Roundtable. I think Tom Wolver would probably be able to explain that a little bit more in detail, but it's basically a group that is from Delaware County, is that correct? Okay. And they meet, and they're going to be doing a potluck, and maybe discussing next steps in the relationship, things like that. So Tuesday, we're going to spend a day in downtown Columbus, we're going to take a tour of the State House, meet with the Columbus Sister City Board, and then we're going to take a tour of German Village. So that evening, we'll be back.
They don't want to do anything German.
Well, but it is part of our history, so, and that's something we can negotiate. We still have a week to kind of clarify everything up. But that evening, we were talking about doing more of a progressive dinner around the downtown area, so I'm working with Brian Harpster from Barley Harpsters to look at some of the different restaurants and bars to maybe do a sample taste testing of appetizers, things like that, and kind of just go, so we can show off our downtown restaurants a little bit. Then Wednesday is what I call O-U Day, so they get to be hosted by Ohio Weslin, and that's one of their, they want to come and have a cultural experience here, but they're also coming to be honored for the relationship with Ohio Weslin through their soccer program, so they're going to be going to a soccer game that evening and be recognized. So that'll be hopefully exciting as long as it's not raining. Again, the weather's not looking so great for the next week, but still a while out. And then Thursday...
And let's go back to Wednesday. Where are they eating breakfast, lunch, and dinner?
I actually just read an email from Mr. Albon, who is our sister city board member from Ohio Weslin, and he's, he's working on that.
Okay, good, thank you.
If not, we will figure out a little bit. We have plenty of places to eat and plenty of people that want us to come to their place. Thursday's a really exciting day. Mr. Jones is going to be taking us to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame in Cleveland. So want to show them a little bit just about, I mean, obviously, we love our city, it's got a lot of great things to offer, but we, the nice thing about our city is we are two hours of every direction from, you know, out of Ohio, so there's other sights to see, and we really want to give them an experience that they can't do there. And Rock and Roll Hall of Fame was actually a suggestion at our sister city board, actually, I think it was Mr. Rover that might have mentioned it, but, and we thought that would be a great idea, so I'm working with the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame on that. And Mr. Jones has a couple of places in mind to go eat at, so we're excited about that. Show them a little bit of the fun down over, or, excuse me, not down there, but up there. And Friday, they're going to be on our radio show, so that's exciting. Darren gets to deal with that, take them.
Destroy their relations between two nations in one half hour's move.
And they're going to leave the radio show and head to the zoo, and they have a private tour, so Ms. Walker and Mr. Shulman will be joining them for that and taking a private tour of the zoo. And then after that, we were looking at having dinner at Buns as a group, so if anybody would like to join, just let me know, so we can figure out how many people would be eating. It'd be around five-ish because that is First Friday, and it is a big First Friday event. It's paws and prevention, so there should be a lot of dogs, and the firemen doing all their really amazing stints. So we really want to give them a taste of what First Friday's about, and so they'll be kind of walking around, and then they leave Saturday, so a lot of things to do in a short period of time.
Well done.
Thank you.
You worked really, really hard on that.
So I will be sending out more emails just to see who's interested in what, would like anybody to join for any of the events.
I also took some notes in my phone that I will share with you, just some things I noticed along the way, like little things that they did, like they brought water when they picked us up from the airport, and after being on a plane for so long, great touch to have little coolers and water, just, I wrote down little things like that, but...
And I don't mean to talk so much, but I don't get the mic very often, so.
It's okay.
But I did want to let you know that a lot of the stuff we're doing is being donated. I'd like to make a reference, is it Performance? They are giving us two vans for, at no cost, just to help us with getting them to different places, which is really exciting, because they're going to be in a lot better condition than my car. Yeah, they won't be sitting in gum or something, but just wanted to...
How many visitors, though?
We have eight. Really four families, like, there's, I only need four host families. One of them is a family of three that's coming, one of them is a mother and daughter, she's a little bit older, so probably my age is the daughter, and then District Mayor and Gabby and Hans, who are personal friends now of Mayor Riggle and Mrs. Keller.
And I was going to have the mayor stay at my house, but my house is under construction. I don't have a shower yet.
So there have been some things said that the district mayor does not speak English, but he actually, he speaks it enough. I don't think they're going to have any deep conversations about war and peace, but he speaks enough of it conversationally to get by. So it, they all speak way more English than we speak German, so don't be afraid with him of, he was able to have conversations with me, and I guess he's really been working on his English, knowing that he's coming, so he speaks English pretty well, and he's really nice. They took such good care of us when we were there. Every detail was pre-planned and thought of, and I'm just really looking forward to the chance to show them the same hospitality that they showed to us.
Very good.
So Mr. Jergens?
I have two.
Oh, be real.
I have two staying at my house for 10 days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Elaine. I just wanted to mention to council that Lee has been working with the app called Nextdoor, and it's a no-charge citizen engagement tool, and he's managing the app and asking questions mostly around the comp plan. And what he hopes to work with Dave and, as we develop, going through the comp plan process, is to take this input from the citizens, and it'll be reflected in different parts of the answer, question and answer in the comp plan process. For a no-charge engagement tool, we're in 27% of the city households and in 49 neighborhoods and still growing, so that's pretty good for no cost. It is, well, it's not no cost, I mean, Lee's time, but he's done a good job. Speaking of comp plan, reminder that we have some meetings this week, September 25th, at the YMCA for the interactive workshop about the comp plan. That's from 6:30, 8:30, September 25th, September 26th, and September 27th. We have those, so please try to make it out to one of those, and that's all I have.
And Dave, do you have enough volunteers at all of those, or do you need more help?
I do. We have an incredible steering committee, and they've all stepped up as have, say, staff to make sure we cover all those, but obviously, we'd like to see all the council members out at one of the meetings. They're all the same, all the same format. If you want the head consultant team, then go to the Y tomorrow. If you prefer me, then come Conver.
Thank you. Council comments. Mr. Jones?
The one I had is fixed at like...
I know.
Tomorrow, yes. This is the first we found out that we were in here today for a good time, but Ryan will be here tomorrow morning fixing it.
Mrs. Keller? I have nothing. Okay. To Brown?
We have some student attendees. I just wondered if you had any questions or, yeah, any questions about this evening?
They just want to paper sign for going to class, right, guys?
All right.
Gotcha. Thanks for being here. Mr. Rohr? Mr. Hellinger?
Nothing.
Mr. Schaefer?
Just, I want to check with Dave. We talked about doing a non-school TIF on this Seattle House project and other projects. Are we still moving ahead with that?
I think the initial runs were done on those. Obviously, didn't get counsel by the, by your question.
Right. Just wanted to make sure we're still a little bit ahead, because that's significant hours coming towards the point.
I think there was an initial investigation of what that might generate, and then, of course, the decision on that would be, have to come back to you guys. We'll make sure that it gets to you. I think Sean was working on that.
Sean wrote a memo that I think was distributed to council, but I'm not aware of any.
The memo was, but nothing, that's, I just wanted to make sure that this doesn't...
Well, for the sake of clarity, is council inclined to do one? I mean, because I don't know if we, I wasn't given clear direction, that was what we wanted to do.
I don't see you downside. It's a non-school TIF, it doesn't have school, you can do right money for a point, so.
That's helpful.
I didn't hear anything else, I'm going to, the next debate, I'll be, I'm going to kill around one.
Okay. And I just want to apologize for not being here at the last meeting, being pulled away unexpectedly, so thank you for running the meeting, and sorry I miss Germany, but mom comes first. So with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn at 9:02.
Move.
We are adjourned. Come on, guys. Get you guys out of here.